Everybody, a roll call has been taken. Let's rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin by reviewing the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Trustee Wake, thank you. A second. Trustee Jenny. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, we all vote to approve the agenda, approved by all trustees present. On number four, we're going to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting that was held April 8th. Do I have a full board motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Trustee Wake, a second. Trustee Kate, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name today. Any public comments? Seeing none, do we vote to approve the minutes? Unanimous with all trustees present. We need to look at the Board of Trustees' minutes for the retreat that was held April 10th. Do I have a full board motion? Trustee Wake, a second. Trustee.
Walsh.
Walsh, thank you. It's really very difficult because we usually use first names, and I may just do that. Any comment, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, can we have a vote to approve those minutes? All in favor, thank you very much. We're moving now on to written correspondence. All of us have received written correspondence, and we also had a link for any additional public comments. Is there any public comment regarding non-agenda items at this time?
Yes, we do. We have Carlene Hathaway is the first one.
Thank you.
You're gonna do it together, okay, and just for.
Before we start, let me just read the rules that we use for public comment. This is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for the board to respond or for the public to ask questions. Please do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. And comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may interrupt or terminate a speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes or directed personally to an individual. So thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Hi, thanks for your time. Do we get six minutes together? No, we won't take anywhere near that. I'm Scott Choak, I'm the MEA president, C-H-O-O-K.
I'm Carlene Hathaway, MMCEO President, C-A-R-L-E-E-N-H-A-T-A-J-W-A-Y.
And last week, we met and interviewed as a team both members from MMCEO and members from the MEA. And we interviewed all the candidates that are running for our school board. And we're pleased to announce our joint endorsements for Wilena Olperson.
Megan Wisher.
Keegan Witt.
Ann Wake.
And Lisa Davy. We appreciate all the work that you do. I don't think that you here thank you enough, so thank you for your service. And, yeah, and vote for the levies.
We endorse that, too.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Good evening. I'm actually interested in speaking with regards to an agenda item. Is now the appropriate time, or should I wait until?
You just should wait until we get to that item.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I haven't been to a school board meeting before, so.
Okay. You can see I don't usually chair them either. Moving on, we have announcements from the superintendent. Superintendent Michael Hill will report.
All right. Well, we're sending out communications around measles. Lots of communications coming to the district via the Health Department, and we're sending out those communications to staff and families as well. Bottom line is that without a vaccine or proof of immunization, exposed students and staff could be out up to 21 days after exposure. Montana had five cases reported in Gallatin County, first time since 1990 in Montana. So we're keeping a watchful eye on that for our district. We're entering the fourth quarter of the school year, which is exciting. Our high school students wrapped up their ACT testing last week. We'll be administering final assessments in our elementaries for mass testing. Students are ramping up and are starting their AP and IB testing. Spring sports, full swing, pun intended, baseball included. And also including events for our Unified Champion Schools with cooperation with Special Olympics Montana. It's really exciting to see some of the things that are going on. Legislatively, today, House Bill 252, known as the STARS Act, officially passed, 43 to 7, and it's headed to the governor's desk for signature, which is great news for MCPS. Also, House Bill 168, which was AMV funding for developmental preschool, also passed today. And I can't remember the number for school meals, but basically eliminating a reduced price meal and just going to a free meal if you qualify. So all of those were good news. Ballots were sent out and people should have started receiving them today for our school elections, which includes voting for three trustee positions, an elementary operational levy, a high school operational levy, and a high school safety levy. The post office recommends that if you're mailing them in, that you get them in before April 29th to ensure that they are received and counted. But they can also be dropped off at various locations in Missoula. Those are noted on our website and/or the county elections department. And those can be received up until May 6th. And May 5th through the 9th is Teacher Appreciation Week. So be sure to thank a teacher. They are everyday heroes who love, support, nurture, educate, and enrich our students' lives. And finally, tonight, we are saying farewell to trustee Kate Gammel, who has been with our board for a short period of time, but we're thankful for your service, supporting education, supporting our community, and just really appreciate of your time. So thank you, Kate. I have a little card for you. And those are my announcements.
Thank you very much. Did anybody want to ask any questions from the board? No?
Quick question.
Yes, please do.
Okay, there we go. Micah, just one quick question on the measles. Are all of our teachers required to have two vaccines for MMR? Because I know at one point you were only required to have one.
Yeah, I don't know that it's necessarily required to have two. We were looking that information up on the CDC the other day. I think it was if you were after a certain date that was being required to, or recommended to get a booster. But right now, I don't know that there would be any exclusion for staff if they didn't have two.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'll double-check that, too, just to be sure.
We'll move on then to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, there is no board discussion, as these are routine items, although any member of the board who wishes to discuss a consent agenda item, you need to make a motion, second it, and move it onto the actual agenda. Is there any, nothing that anyone wants to look at? So the first is to approve individual transportation contracts, both elementary and secondary. Pat McHugh will address that issue.
Consent, sorry.
Oh, sorry, if there are any questions. Seeing none, do we have an elementary motion to approve the transportation contracts? So moved. Any second? Thank you, Jeff Ascaras. Do we have a high school motion as well? We'll take them one at a time, but Lisa Davy, trustee Davy, anyone want to second that one? Keegan Witt, trustee Keegan Witt. So first, we'll vote on the elementary motion. All in favor of approving.
What do you do, public comments?
I'm sorry. Public comments on the transportation issues, agreements. Seeing none, we'll vote on it now. All in favor of the elementary motion, please raise your hand. Approved by those elementary trustees present. The high school motion, all in favor. And approved by all trustees present. We'll move on to new business. And the first is to approve action for HB 252 that was mentioned before. Superintendent Hill?
Thank you. So there has been a lot of, I'll just say, communication statewide from a variety of organizations relative to what schools, districts should do relative to the passage of House Bill 252, which passed today. And so we wanted to include this on the agenda because one of the recommendations coming out of legal counsel is to, we're going to have to attest that we will be working with our union to ensure compliance with the law of House Bill 252, which basically says, in a five-year period of time, we will be bringing base teacher pay up to 70% of average teacher pay and no less than 11 times the quality educator payment, which was stipulated in the bill. And so what this is really doing is, because it basically becomes effective on May 15th, we don't know when the governor's going to sign it, he could sign it on May 20th. We were just trying to get it in front of the board to make sure that you are aware and that you're giving me authorization to sign an MOU with our teachers' union, the MEA, so that we can make sure that we receive these funds because we do qualify. We just have to attest. This is a negotiation year for our unions, and so the way that the law is written, it says basically that by July 1st, 2025, you're attesting that you have a contract in place. We have a contract in place presently, but we will not have one, or we don't have one into the future. But we have to attest by May 15th. So that's what I'm putting in front of the board, is to say, please give me approval to sign off on that. Part of the reason, most times, MOUs don't actually come in front of the board. They're usually in agreement in Trevor's world around human resources, but this one has a pretty significant financial aspect to it. And I would just stand for questions. I did incorporate all of House Bill 252 in the packet, and if there were questions about any part of that, we could try and answer questions. Some of what we're wrestling with right now, and even Pat and I were talking before the meeting, is what is the interpretation of some of these components that are included in that?
Are there any questions about HB 252? Yes, trustee Mercer.
So educational entity, our two districts are separate and have separate math?
They're going to be treated as one for the purpose of calculating the average teacher pay. But yes, they are two separate, but they all get lumped together.
Okay, and then the charter schools are not separate for that, or are they? They're just all, we're all one?
All one.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? So the administration recommends that we approve Superintendent Micah Hill as an authorized signer for a memorandum of understanding as part of the requirements for HB 252. Do I have a motion for that? Trustee Wake, a second. Trustee Walsh, is there any board discussion? Any public comments about this bill and the MOU? Oh, we had another question, yes, Lisa Davy.
I just wanted to say a big thank you to trustee Walsh and trustee Walker Andrews for doing so much advocacy around a lot of the state legislation this year, and especially for the STARS Act.
Thank you. She did all the work, but anyway. So no public comments that have been seen? Can we vote on approving Micah Hill as our authorized signer for an MOU? Unanimous with all the trustees present. The second new business item is permission to award the replacement of domestic water lines at Meadow Hill Middle School. And this is an elementary item, and Burley McWilliams will speak to this.
Well, technical difficulties.
The facilities guy.
Not the tech guy. As, we kind of came to board last year about this time for Porter, and I know we're not here to talk about Porter, but I do want to announce that you did approve that project. We completed that project last year, and we were able to get that entire project reimbursed by the Montana DEQ. So that was a pretty big win to replenish some of our permissive levy funds to do other projects. So it's a big win, and we hope to do the same thing here with Meadow Hill. Again, this is based off some of our lead pipe needs at Meadow Hill. We'll likely do, we'll do all of the seventh and eighth grade wing and the sixth grade wing as well. And then there's a couple faucets that we'll replace, some fixtures we'll replace in the music wing. But the base bid on that project, we didn't put it in there at the time because we didn't quite have it yet, but it's $323,000. There are some alternates in that project, but we've yet to determine what alternates we'll take. And working with the contractor to kind of dive in and investigate those alternates and the costs involved. So we'll kind of adjust that as we start to negotiate the contract.
Do we have a motion to agree with the administration that we award the bid to Northwest Mechanical Contractors pending a successful negotiation of a contract? So moved?
Yes.
You changed your name when you first got on this board, trustee Hayes. Do we have a second? Trustee Ascaras. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, could we have a vote? From the middle, yeah, it's middle school, so it's just elementary, right?
Yep.
Yeah, from the elementary trustees? Unanimous with all those trustees present. Thank you very much. The third topic is permission to increase the lease rates and extend facility lease agreements. This is again an elementary item, and Burley McWilliams will speak to this one as well.
Yeah, thanks. So a little bit of history on our lease rates. So right around 2,000, our lease rate was at $3 a square foot. And we increased that to $5, which is where we're currently at. We have an increase on an annual basis, according to CPI, or no greater than 3%. So that's what you would see routinely every year off of that $5 per square foot. We've recently done some market research on it. Last fall, I worked with a local realtor. We looked at warehouse space and office space. And then most recently, we've kind of re-investigated where those rates are at as well. It's kind of hard to look at market research on schools. There's really nothing out there for school leasing. So the warehouse and the office space made sense. The warehouse space was an average of right around $13 a square foot. And the office space was a little more volatile, it was a little all over the place, but it was right around 20. You saw some in the 30s, some in the 40s. Now, that has to do with, you know, some facilities being new, maybe some different amenities. We're leasing a school. We understand schools have challenges to lease. Sometimes we don't give long-term leases. We don't, sometimes there's three different organizations under the same roof, and they're kind of sharing this facility, and there's this cooperation and teamwork between them, and that can be challenging as well. And then, you know, we're here to educate kids, and we tend to prioritize our schools over the leases. And so there's some wait time potentially there for groups that are leasing our buildings, too, to help, for our maintenance folks to get in there. So there are some challenges around that, and we understand that. So we understand that we can be a little bit below market, but yet we still need to generate some revenue to offset facility cost. We've used these rental funds or these lease rates for, well, the building we're sitting in was a big portion of lease rates. We were able to do Building A and Building B renovations. Most recently, our facility study has been a big portion that was paid for with lease rates. We've replaced heating units in Cold Springs. We've upgraded fire systems. We upgraded security systems in all these schools with those funds. And it's hard to project what we'll need and what those costs are. So it's, we always kind of talk about this break-even point. It's really hard to generate that break-even point when it comes to facilities in regards to something that's not measurable. When we're talking about gym rentals and building rentals, that kind of thing, I can predict somewhat custodial costs, and paper towels and utilities are a little bit easier to predict. But some of these facility needs and upgrades, when you do it, our buildings are not always. We can have a roof be a big issue tomorrow and not know what that cost will be. So we kind of play a little bit of chess here with how those rates can help impact the district and offset facility rates. The three organizations that are on the agenda today, Cancer Support Community Montana, Studio M, and Friends of the Children. The reason they're on this agenda item is their rates or their lease agreements are up June 30th of this year. The other lease that we have. July 30th, sorry. Sorry, yes, July 30th of this year. I'm sorry, thanks. And the other lease agreement we have was Missoula Child Care Advantage. Their lease is not up till 2028, or they would likely be seen on this agenda item as well. So in 2028, we'll be back, and we'll be looking at what the rate increases will be for that, too. But in their agreement, they have that 5% with that 3% CPI-type language. So those three groups, that's why those three organizations are on there. Again, we're recommending a one-year agreement based on our facility study that's currently taking place. We feel like that that study should take place before the board makes any more decisions. That study is scheduled to wrap up in December of this year, so we should have a good sense of where we need to go this next winter. And, you know, we've had numerous groups reach out over the last six months. Churches, sports groups, all kinds of groups looking for long-term leases and even short-term leases in our buildings. And we've continued to decline those based on our facility study. We think it's important that we keep the folks that are there already in their schools and help support those organizations. But we're not allowing any other organizations, allowing is a strong word, but we're not recommending any other organizations for any sort of leases at this time. So as per the recommendation, we're recommending a one-year extension and then an $8 increase per square foot, not increase, sorry, an increase to $8 a square foot this year and $10 a square foot next year.
So does any, well, the administration is recommending that we approve the one-year lease extensions for Cancer Support Community Montana, Studio M, and Friends of the Children, and approve the increase in the lease rate to $8 a square foot in August of 2025 and $10 a square foot in August of 2026. Do I have that motion from anyone? Well, we can ask questions now or have discussion after the motion is made, so. Do we have a motion?
The elementary.
Yeah. Okay, a motion's made by trustee Walsh. Do we have a second? Trustee Keegan Witt? And now board discussion and questions. Yes.
I would like to recuse myself from this agenda item.
Trustee Ascaras?
Burley, why not just do the $8? And if we're holding back for the facility study to be, to wrap up, then just come back next year if we want to go to $10 or whatever we want to do.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I think that'd be completely fine. We are only renewing a one year. We kind of felt 10 is where we needed to be, which is why you put it on there. We want to do a phasing to kind of help support those organizations in our facilities, but that is, we could easily do that, yes.
Yes.
If this rate increase is a hardship for some of these community, not really partners, but great community aspects, organizations, do we have people in line to take over that space? I guess that's my question. Is there someone ready to move in?
Yeah, kind of like I said, I've had a lot of requests. I mean, recently, I had a church request, the whole other remaining parts of Cold Springs. I've had about five churches reach out to me in the last six months. It's kind of interesting. So I don't know that I would say they're in line, but we definitely get a lot of requests. I would say on a monthly basis, I probably get two to three.
Can I add?
Yes, please.
I was just going to add that I don't think we've ever, other than maybe that admin building that we did through our committee, ever gone out to bid for prospective tenants. I think they've found us. So I want to reinforce what Burley was saying, that we're not trying to get to market. I mean, if we were to try to get to market, that's how we would do it, is we would look to open up to a bidding format that would identify the space. And I think what we've kind of gotten away from was, before COVID, when somebody was interested in the space, we would really ask them to lease all of it, or the bulk of it. And so we've kind of gotten into this boutique lease arrangement, which creates more tenants and more difficulties, honestly. So, I mean, if you were to start over, you'd probably look at something along those lines where you looked at more of the space.
Any other questions or comments, discussion? Yes.
I won't be able to vote on this, but I did just want to say that I feel like you've done a really good job thinking about balancing this not being a huge shock and jump and moving us closer to market, but without, yeah, I guess, anyway. Good work, and I would support this if I were allowed to vote on it.
Yes, Mercer Cohen.
So on the topic of like, what is?
So on the topic of like, what is being leased? Is it classrooms, do the halls count? Like, what counts in the square footage? Or is it narrowly to an individual classroom? Or does like the foyer, is the foyer in it? Like, whatever, like what square footage is going into these?
Yeah, we primarily look at the usable space. So we're looking at the classroom space, the office space that they're using, if they're using the gym. Well, that's the space we take square footages of. And currently, Friends of the Children is right around 6,900 square feet. Studio M's at 7121. And the Cancer Support Montana is at 38,000, 38, 38, 3830. So pretty good-sized spaces.
We did have a question from trustee Ev Guerras asking whether we, I think it was you, put off the $10, and that was entertained. So do we want to actually amend the motion? Okay.
Because question, so that has no effect on these current leases one way or the other, right? Because they're one-year.
Correct, you're correct.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening again. My name is Ben Davis, B-N-D-A-V-I-S. I'm the executive director of Friends of the Children. So I am one of the, I'm, of course, one of the impacted organizations from this proposal. Wanted to speak briefly about our organization, the work we do as a, as a community partner of the district, and then the impact that this will have on our organization. So I like to think of Friends of the Children as a poverty disruptor. We pair full-time salaried mentors called friends with children in the community who have the highest risk factors. We're really proud to partner with the school district. We have mentors in all 10 of the, of the elementary schools in town. We start working with children when they're in elementary school, and then we walk alongside them for, for 12-plus years through high school graduation. We spent over 4,000 hours last year in, in the schools, in MCPS, working with the children to improve their attendance, be able to engage in classroom instruction. And we've just seen amazing growth in the children. Just in the last two weeks, we've had three different principals call us, asking us, when are you enrolling more kids in this program? We have school counselors telling us that they're now able to focus on serving children who have earlier prevention needs because we're working with tier-two and three-level interventions with children. So the program's really working. I want to call out that 92% of our budget is private funding through philanthropy. The school, the school district does not provide funding for the, for this program, though I would argue that it's really greatly benefiting MCPS students, teachers, and counselors, and so forth. We are really so pleased and happy to rent space at Mount Jumbo School. As, as Burley mentioned, we, we lease, I think it's about 18% or 19% of the, of the overall school space. And, you know, we use it for our clubhouse, so the kids come there after school. It's a very popular place for birthday parties for the kids. This is a two-generation program, so then we're also hosting family events on a monthly basis for the 48 families in this program. In terms of the proposed rent increase, I certainly recognize that the, the district has significant maintenance costs with these structures and what have you. But I do want to call out that this is a proposed 53% increase on our rent. And if you were to adopt the second year, it would be an 89% increase on our rent. And so if you think about any nonprofit or business in the community who would be asked to weather that sort of increase, I don't know that you would be able to find many businesses or nonprofits that would be able to withstand that, that sort of increase. We'd be looking at an additional $30,000 in rent per year in terms of this cost structure. And so the real impact, if we're, you know, looking at the, the reality of the situation is, we're going to be able to serve less kids. We're aspiring to, to grow our program to 64 families in the community this year. And I'm going to end up then spending more time raising money to pay, pay rent instead of serving more children in this program. So I just want to paint a picture as to what the, the reality of this is. We may need to move from, from the space because of this. The other thing that I want to very diplomatically point out is that I asked for a multi-year lease when we negotiated this, this lease initially in 2023 and was told that would not be a possibility. I respect that. I do think it's relevant to point out that other.
Sorry. I was timing it, yes.
I'll try to wrap up.
And now we know.
I'll try to wrap up very, very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra time. That other lessees, is my understanding, do have multi-year leases that don't expire until 2028. We would have loved to have entered into a lease in multi-years because I was concerned about lease escalations. But I think it's also relevant to point out that we were told, it's a one-year lease, so you all can obviously decide on the rates each year. But I was told to expect rates of inflation increases. And so that's what we planned on from a budgeting perspective. And here we are talking about an 89% increase over two years. So it just has very serious ramifications for our organization and frankly, for, for MCPS students who greatly benefit from this program. These are children who have the highest risk factors, and they need to be in this program. There's great urgency around enrolling more, more children in this program because it works.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to vote on the amended recommendation? Which was that we approve the one-year lease extensions for Cancer Support Community Montana, Studio M, and Friends of the Children, and approve, approve the increase in the lease rate to $8 per square foot in August of 2025? That's the motion on the table. Yes, question? Yep.
Okay, so this seems crazy fraught to me. I head start that I felt was providing a direct service to our students back when that was a dollar. I had no problem with that, it seemed reasonable. If the administration were, I know nothing about this organization, I know absolutely nothing about it. If the, if the district was going to tell me that, that is also. Value. It's almost like I want to say we should set a rate, and then if someone's providing value, make donations back in lieu, kind of donation in lieu of rent to them or something? If it is something that's truly providing value? I mean, we wouldn't charge Parks and Rec to run the after-school at Lowell, right? Like, that would be insane. I don't know. So I, I'm sympathetic to if it is providing a service to our kids versus something that isn't. So I don't know what to do with that. And it would, I get the fraught part is like, we'd have to then describe value and say, this entity is worthy of something and this one isn't, which just seems crazy fraught. But that's what you'd have to do to make a call between different organizations.
I have a comment.
Lisa Davy?
Burley, could you tell us how many square feet they rent right now? Again, I know you said it, but I didn't write it down.
I think it was 6,900.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee Ev Guerras?
Yeah, the issue is, is that we'll still be far below market value, almost half. There's wear and tear on these buildings. There's, there's a, even though we're doing a service, it's still a, a separate private entity. So it gets to the point where you have to make decisions on, is it even worth renting the space? The increase in square footage, I, I know, Burley, you put up here $13 a square foot for warehouse rate. And, uh, man, I'd like to find $13 a square foot for warehouse rate because that's probably low for what you're going to find. You're probably going to be way out of town. So we're renting at $5 is incredibly low for premium space. I would guess that at $5, the school district's probably going backwards when we look at upkeep on the buildings and all the things that go with that. So I know it hurts, and we definitely want to support these organizations. And I, and I think $8 is still a deal of deals for what we're doing. And if we were being more aggressive, as Pat said, if we were looking at market value, it would be a completely different view. We would be tripling the rate right now. But I think $8, even though as a percentage seems like a big jump, it is, it seems to me a fair blend into what we, a better rate considering all the inflationary things that we have to deal with. For example, if we have to replace a roof or we have to do any maintenance on the building, those costs are more than they have been and than they were three, four years ago. Maybe 50, 60, 70%, maybe 100% more than they used to be. So as a school district, I think we have to think about those sort of things. So like I say, even though it's a percentage, feels like a big jump, pure dollar-wise, it's still a very aggressive rate.
Other comments or questions?
I'll make a comment.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Camel rhymes with camel.
I can't see you against the light.
Again, I'm, same with Lisa, I'm not going to be voting on this. But I believe that the real estate that MCPS has is one of our greatest assets. So as a board member, caring for our real estate is going to be something that would be of high importance to me. So a question for you, Burley, would be, speak to us about the cost of maintaining, say, Mount Jumbo or Cold Springs and how these leases can attribute to that.
Well, kind of going back to some of the repairs we've done. So if we have heating issues, you know, you can, you can replace a pump to a heating unit for $5,000. I mean, things just don't cost like the, the same in our schools as it does in your home. If we have a roofing issue, it could be $2,000, $3,000 for every single repair. If you have, like, we're going to be doing some asphalt work out there at Mount Jumbo, and it costs $1,000 just to mobilize an asphalt company to your site, not even to make the repairs. And so all those things add up that we don't typically budget a ton of money for in our, in our voted building reserve levy. We try to keep it into our occupied facilities. So we're utilizing these funds to take care of a lot of those expenditures. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Just right after her. Lisa Davy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I ran the numbers a little bit. And so the difference will be about $20,000 a year that we're asking for. And if we were going to do it at $13 a square foot, it would be 89,700. And so, I mean, arguably, we are already subsidizing them by about $34,500. And so, I mean, that's how I would look at it too, that we're already subsidizing these organizations.
Trustee Mercer?
Just coming to terms with the head start. Burley, was part of the reason that we put it at a dollar is because they actually put money into the building as well, which would be different than at least some of these. Like, they made improved, they, right, they did repairs?
Yeah, I can add some in the pack and chime in, but I believe it's $1,000 a month.
Now, right, yeah.
And yeah, they've made a lot of capital improvements in the, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. They're a federally funded program as well. And then we have staff that actually work in that building. It's, that partnership is a little more, I mean, I don't want to downplay Friends of Children because I think it's a fantastic organization, they do a really lot of good things with our, with our kids. But we actually have that tie, that knit with, with Missoula Head Start, with our staff in their building, there in our building, kind of thing.
Trustee Walsh?
I just want to kind of voice probably the inner struggle we're all having, which is that we need to be really careful stewards of tax dollars and make sure we're using our assets in meaningful ways, but also fiscally responsible ways, and recognizing the value that these, these organizations in our community bring to the table for our students. But I think I, looking at the numbers, feel confident that we're still making that adjustment to compensate for the value that they do bring.
Additional comments? Seeing none, are we ready to vote on this item as amended? And it's just elementary trustees who'll be voting. So if you vote for it, please raise your hand. It's one, two, three, four, five, I can't see the, four, okay. So one abstention and four in favor? And I think that's all the elementary trustees. Thank you very much. Moving on, the next item is to authorize Resolution 202510S, which is the Declaration of Election by Acclamation. This is a secondary action, secondary school action. Pat McHugh, you'll speak to this.
You bet, thank you. So the number of candidates for the two open trustee, high school trustee positions, District A and District D, the, the number of candidates was equal to the number of open positions. So there were no write-in candidates that were, got lost in what I was trying to say.
That's all right. It's happened up here lately.
It's catchy up here. So there were no write-in candidates. And, and so the, the board can declare those, those elections declared, they can declare those elections by acclamation. We seat the trustees still during the time we seat trustees in May. So the resolution's attached and happy to answer any questions, or try to answer any questions.
So the administration is recommending that we approve a resolution that authorizes the declaration for the high school District A and high school District D. Any motion for that? Trustee Witt, second. Trustee Ev Guerras, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote? Oh, sorry, public comment? No public comments, so go ahead and vote. All in favor of the acclamation? It's unanimous with all trustees present. We're going to turn back to Mr. McHugh in a second. We're being asked to approve a tax remittance agreement for fiscal year 2004, 2025. It's on page four of your packet.
Thank you. So this is, this is good news. Even though there's little that school districts can do with TIF remittances under MCA 7154291, they can only be used to reduce taxes or enhance reserves. And that's still a, a good thing for us. Last year, we received remittance of $490,000 elementary and $695,000 high school. And we use those to reduce our debt service levy and to offset an overbase levy, so add to the overbase levy there by reducing it. And then we also used the funds to enhance reserves. So this action item isn't how the, the funds will be used, but just approval to sign the agreement with the, with the city. And then we'll come back to the board with our recommendation for how to, to use those funds. But, but likely, well, the, the recommendation will include some level of reduction in taxes.
Do we have a motion to approve the tax increment remittance agreement? So moved. Trustee Wake, second. Trustee Davy, board discussion? Yes, trustee Witt?
A quick question. When it's being decided as to how to, to use that, is that something that's going to go in front of the Budget Committee? Is that the plan?
You know, part of it will. I hadn't planned on it from a total use standpoint, but we could. The part that I was going to talk with the Budget Levy Committee about is, after House Bill 28 passed, it adjusted our budgets, but also boosted our overbase levies. And so we can use those funds to, to meet the full amount of the overbase levy. So that's, that's good news.
Yes, I had a question because you mentioned that last time you used it to reduce the overbase levy. So when people voted on that levy last year and it passed, that means that they didn't get taxed at the same level that they had voted for?
We didn't reduce the amount of the voted overbase levy. What we did is, the amount of the overbase levy could have been more. So we were able to get to maximum budget using the, both the overbase approved voted levy and a portion of the TIF. So, that's, it, it's a very small amount, but we're trying to get to 100%. And then, with the legislative year, you have to set budgets, as you guys know, at the end of March, and so then, things change, which they did this year, and, and it's good to be able to have a, an ability to get to that full 100%.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? Trustee Walsh?
Okay, this might be a question I always ask, because I'm just still trying to understand it all, but is there a scenario, and it might be not super connected to this, but is there a scenario in which folks out there who have their ballots vote for our levies, and that's not the amount they pay, they're going to be paying much less than the amounts that are on there?
It can be a scenario, and, you know, a good example is the legislation that has some property tax relief, but it, it's, it's, it's more often happened where a state allocation changes, and so, we, we see less of a permissive base levy in the general fund than what we were anticipating. And, and usually, that calculation is, is very much a math calculation, so it's, it doesn't have a lot of adjustment to it. It's, it's mostly, when you look at the funding formula, some of the funding pieces are based upon the statewide allocation, so there's a, there's a disproportionate cost reimbursement that's provided. It represents our relative sped funding to other district sped funding. At-risk is based upon our relative free and reduced population, so there's, there can be some funding changes that doesn't change max budget, it just changes how, how the max budget is funded. So, usually, we see it when the guaranteed tax base aid from the state goes up and our base levy goes down. So, to answer your question, yes, it can happen.
And then, to summarize everything that you just said so smartly, we're just so careful with every penny, and we're always trying to make sure the impact is great for our students and minimal on our taxpayers.
Very true, and this is a good example of that, because the TIF remittance isn't something that we'll be able to deposit in Fund 15 and use to, you know, put a roof on a building, but we'll be able to, and this is a good year, to reduce some, some, some taxes, and, and we'll be able to talk about that more, really, when you guys adopt budgets in August, but we'll try and foreshadow it next month.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, we need to vote on whether to, well, approve the tax increment financing ribbons, and this is both elementary and secondary. All in favor? Unanimous for all trustees present? Thank you. Number eight is to approve the Willard Alternative High School Program Calendar. This is obviously secondary, and Trevor Lebowski will speak to it.
Thank you. This is essentially a high school calendar with a couple more records days tied in for the Willard staff, so it's, it's basically a high school calendar.
Do we have any questions about the calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? So moved. Trustee Wake, second. Trustee Walsh, any final comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, can we vote on the Willard Calendar? All in favor? By all trustees present. We're going to take a quick break before our work session, so that we can make sure that the media is ready to go. So, about a five-minute break? So. Okay, if we could come back to order, I think we're about ready to move to the work session. But before the, we begin the work session, one of our trustees wants to make a few comments. Trustee Kate Gamble.
Thank you so much, Arlene. Yeah, I asked if I could, since this is my last meeting, sitting on the board, I just really wanted to take a moment to thank you for this opportunity. So, I wrote a little statement. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the opportunity to serve with all of you here. This role has offered a valuable window into the incredible complexity that all of you guys know, and the dedication required to support our schools from yet another side of the equation. As you all know, I have been a teacher for 15 years, so this kind of provided me with a window to this side of things. I really hope that this board continues to prioritize clear, two-way communication that asks the critical questions that so many of you are really good at asking for clarifying, especially around supporting folks like Burley when it comes to facility maintenance. I think that is of utmost importance, to keep, continuing to provide high-quality professional development, to keep taking a peek at the student achievement that our students have, celebrate your successes, and gather data so that you guys can drive your decisions through the data collection that you guys have, especially in education. I think we got a sneak peek at, you know, some decisions that will be coming down the road with you guys there. I do encourage the board to stay connected to the people doing the day-to-day work. They're the heart of our system, and their voices are essential. Finally, I invite each of you to reflect, every single one of you, to reflect on your why. So, why are you here? What does your service truly do? And let that, let the clarity that you get from that guide your decisions and strengthen your impact. So, thank you again for the opportunity to do this important work, and I look forward to our paths crossing in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, now we'll move on to our work session, and this is information, pretty much, and our Assistant Superintendent Vinnie Jamona will make the presentation.
I was going to start, I was going to do a little introduction, and this is not just going to be a presentation and information, this is going to be interaction, because we are an arts-integrated school district, and we have a wonderful team of people that I'll let Vinnie introduce, but that support education, Missoula, support arts, support what that looks like for our students, and you get, you're going to see some, some pretty amazing things that we're doing in our district. So, Vinnie, I'm going to let you go.
Appreciate that, Superintendent Hill. I don't know if it's just my end of the table, but the energy is palpable, so I know you're all excited to get rolling with this engaging and hands-on activity, like my steama colleagues to my left. Sincere, I want to thank you as a board for engaging with us in this work session tonight. I know it's really important, as we've talked throughout the years and, and various board members that have, have come and gone, it's, it's always nice to have the conversation, to talk about artifacts, to talk about the learning that's happening in our district. I know it's really important for you as a board to talk about our strategic plan, but also those strategic initiatives. And arts integration is, is one of our five pillars. That is a focus for us as a district, and so, we felt like as a group, what great time as we approach our 10-year anniversary of arts integration, what a great opportunity to come here, to have a hands-on, engaging experience, and to demonstrate to our board what our students and staff get to experience day in and day out through arts integration. With me tonight, I have a great group. I have Barbara Frank, who you know well, as our Academic and Community Services Director. We have Sienna Claiborne, who is our Spark Director, and we have Karen Bartels, who is our District Arts Integration Coach. And so, with them, we've created an experience for the next 45 minutes to an hour to demonstrate what we are doing through arts integration. The activity that we're going to start us with tonight, we felt was appropriate, the artist, Vasli Kandinsky, who I said right finally, is a 20th-century artist who demonstrated a lot of his art through, through lines. He is known for, for bright colors, he's known for geometric shapes, he's known for movement, but most importantly, through his lines. And we're going to demonstrate through this first activity called Line Stories, how we can demonstrate and create our experience through lines. So, what I'd like us to do as a board right now, you've had the past weekend, you've had your drives to work, you had your drive here tonight, I want you to think about what different lines tell a story that you've seen. So, what lines can tell us? They can tell us many different stories. They can tell us about health, they could tell us about direction, they could tell us about a lot of different pieces. Are there any board members that are willing to unmute and share what stories lines have told them recently? I'm really good at wait time.
I've been proving tonight how mixed up I can get, so you're, you're asking what lines, L-I-N-E-S?
Yes. What can, what can a line tell you? How can a line tell a story? Go ahead.
Okay, I'll take a stab. This might be a wide interpretation, but there, on my path, on my path around town, there's a frequent squiggle in my life, which is the Higgins to Brooks turn. And I often am, I'm often not thinking, and I'm in one lane, but I need to be in the other, and there's this panicked moment, it gestures wildly to all the other members of the traffic. But that is a squiggle that is just so consistent in my life, and, I don't know, that's a line story.
That's great. Any others?
My car, I stop at a line so I don't run over pedestrians that are crossing in front of me.
Okay. Lines tell our story of how to be safe, how to interact in society, how to be safe on our streets. Any others before we, we move to the next piece?
Well, being more verbal than artistic, I always, I'm thinking about all the lines my husband gives me.
Thanks. That's great.
It's on my list, it's the most common.
Great answer, Arlene, that's awesome.
Do you draw a line in the sand, Arlene?
All right, any others come to mind? Yeah, go ahead.
I can think about, I am training for backpacking, and my friend decided to take me up horrible switchbacks, and so, for me, that's what I think about is zigzag.
Yeah. The challenge of the journey, right? Start to finish, how we get there? Okay, awesome. So, we, we know that lines can teach us direction, they can tell us direction, lines can tell us emotion, lines can tell us feelings. So, what I'd like us to do for the next minute, you all have a piece of paper and a pen. I want you to create one continuous line that would demonstrate your, your journey this year as a board member. So, think about your story as a board member this year. It has to be a continuous line, it has to be on the paper, and that's where the rules stop. You've got one minute. Before I go, Ms. Bartels is going to add one caveat. Hit, hit, there you go. Yep, the red line.
Hello. Hi. I also just want to highlight the different types of lines there are. So, you don't have to think always in a straight, vertical line. There's different lines, and different lines evoke a different emotion, and a different part symbolize, you referenced a squiggle line, and how that made you feel when you're in that moment with the gestures. And so, thinking about is your journey as a school board member this year and what you're working on, think about what type of line you would use to represent that and how it would look on your paper. We also have markers, if you're someone who would like to include color, which is also what Kandinsky is known for.
Okay.
What's our starting point, Vinnie?
On the paper?
Yeah, like, what date? Do you want us to go a year back from 10 now?
I would say August, August to now.
August to now.
Yeah, great question, Jeff. All right, go ahead, one minute.
This is the Dell Jones. No, I fell off the page. Same old, same old?
All right. What I'd like you to do now is I'd like you to turn and talk with a neighbor, and I want you to describe your line with your neighbor and your, your journey this year as a trustee.
Which is two.
Turn and talk, go ahead.
Okay, we already said. Dell Jones.
Did you watch The Monsters?
I did.
I watched only the last bit, which was incredible.
That's what I was saying, so we missed it, so we were in trouble.
Okay, no, I don't know what I mean by this, it's just, for me, I think it's been not so much a board member as following the legislative line, people, topics, and things. Yeah, and trying to figure out how many people to write.
Did I ever say?
It's so frustrating, but actually, that's not true. I got the sweep.
Oh, nice.
For the op-ed, we all submitted, and I'm on it one more time, but thanking you for writing that, it's my thing, the bottom, but of course, there used to be a certain number.
Yeah, you don't work as well as you.
Yeah, I've talked to him many times, but, yeah.
Good work, good work.
I mean, he's the only person who's sort of.
Okay, we're going to bring you back as a group?
Oh, yeah.
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 Okay, so as, as we bring you back, I just want you to, to maybe have the lens of a student. So think about, we just did a minute activity, and think about metacognitively where, where our students are at, this process of learning, and, and demonstrating how we can show understanding, proficiency, how we demonstrate learning, that doesn't always have to be pen to paper, that doesn't always have to be in the moment that's traditional, that maybe has been traditional in the past. Think about how engaged you are as a board. We had every board member quickly excited, turning and talking, sharing their artifact, learning more about their peer or colleague next to them, and the power that that has in creating a, an environment that's safe, that's trusting, that's engaging, and that students want to be a part of. And when we talk about arts integration, we talk about equity, we talk about giving every student an opportunity to demonstrate learning, to feel safe, to show their understanding in different ways outside of just a piece of paper. Last one, and then we're going to jump over to Sienna and Karen. So think about on your line, you're going to turn and talk, but I want you to note one area of your line that has been your most challenging moment this year as a trustee, and one area of your line that has been the most rewarding. We'll let you turn and talk and give you 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Most challenging? Sitting at this, this position.
Yeah.
And yours probably deciding.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Deciding when it is to talk to them.
Yeah.
Well, I have similar to that, because when MTSBA asked me to think about being president, I would have to run for a third term, and while I think I could do it, I don't think it's right.
That's it.
I mean, I'm looking at, you know, the president now, the president that was.
Yeah.
You don't need somebody who's, I'll be, I'll be 78 by then, and hopeful that I could at least do better than them, but you know what it means.
Yeah, totally.
So, yeah, and for you to decide to retire from this position, yeah, after all these years.
Exactly.
Yeah. But you're going to work for another company that has asked you, yeah, and you're probably more.
Different reasons this time here. Possibly.
And less, less language, I guess.
Possibly, and some in other ways, stress. Just different, and I think that, but I always, I always love about this job, it's just the, even though you don't work with kids, just the, they're all positive.
All right. Just a couple more seconds, and then we'll bring it back.
I mean, that's sort of like when I went from a professor to period about my research to demonstrate your end.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so speaking of lines, we're going to talk a little bit about the journey of Spark Arts. So I am the Executive Director of Spark Arts, I'm the third director. This June will mark seven years with Spark Arts, and Spark was here before me, obviously, in 2013. So we noticed that there was an inequity of arts experiences in the district. There were schools that were receiving more arts access due to PTO and PTA contributions, and Spark came in and kind of helped level the playing field a little bit. In 2013, we were also noticing most teachers who were using arts integration were Creative Pulse graduates. There was a fourth grade and a fifth grade arts experience, there were two visual art teachers for the nine elementary schools, and this is when we were accepted for the Any Given Child Initiative as part of the Kennedy Center. And I just wanted to also just put in a note here, I'm very happy that the Kennedy Center had the foresight to really keep this initiative local. It's always been local, we've always been funded locally, it's owned by our community, it's a collective impact program. So we are still rocking it this year and really coming together as a collective impact to make sure that our kids have access to arts education. So a lot of people are at the table, the city of Missoula, we have funders at the table, business leaders, parents, community partners, the University of Montana and MCPS, and we're all working together to make sure that our kids have equitable access for the arts. So in 2014, our programming started, and that's why we're celebrating our 10-year anniversary this year. In 2015, we had middle school programming start, and there was an additional visual arts teacher that was added. So now we have three visual art teachers in 2015. In 2016, Trevor was actually a part of this, and we had a district-wide defining arts integration training for all of the teachers, so that they understood what arts integration is. And I think we all kind of understand that, but I just wanted to just take a moment to kind of define that. Karen Bartels would be better at defining it, but really, arts integration is when you marry the arts and curriculum content, and they match so well that you can't really think about doing it otherwise, and that kids are demonstrating their understanding of curriculum content through an art form. So one of the perfect examples of this is the water cycle. Naturally, the water cycle is moving and kinetic, and so a lot of times we'll have local teaching artists coming into the classroom to do dance, right, or creative movement to show that. Okay, so moving on to 2017, Chief Charlo Staff and the principal that was there, Mr. Giamona, traveled to Darrell Academies in Southern Nevada, and this really started momentum in the district. Chief Charlo was a pilot school for STEAM. And then in 2018, there was a conference here called Arts Transforms Community Conference, and now all grade levels had an arts experience. So Spark Arts also does arts experiences for kids, starting with kindergarten through eighth grade, where we have shadow puppetry for kindergarten, and in the next couple weeks, we're having a lot of arts experiences for third grade, first grade, and kindergarten. In 2020, MCPS added one visual art teacher, and we then added five temporary visual art teachers, and we had a teaching artist training during COVID, where we really took that time to train our teaching artists, so that they all had the definition of arts integration, they all had common language, and they were really using the curriculum standards with their art form. In 2021, we, we launched that residency directory, so all of our teaching artists are trained by Kennedy Center teaching artists, they're all vetted, they all have vetted residencies, and that's up on our directory. And then the MCPS School Board approved the strategic plan, which included arts and arts integration. In 2022, Spark Arts became its own 501(c)(3) as a nonprofit, an elementary team visited Darrell Academies in Southern Nevada, and an arts integration committee was created with those people who went down to the site visit. And then we became part of a national case study and traveled to Crystal Bridges in Arkansas and were a case study of arts integration. In 2023, we were part of an arts education journal. The 21360 grant proposal, which Barbara's part of, was approved, and we got some more arts integration funding for professional development. We hired the arts integration instructional coach, and we rolled out arts integration with teacher clarity. We also had district-wide trainings, and the middle school teams visited Darrell. In 2024, we had middle school teams visit Darrell, we started an arts integration collection online database for lesson plans for local classroom teachers, we vetted some impact surveys, and we had trimester professional development with all EL through fifth grade. Actually, just today, we had some demonstration lessons happening with someone who was streaming in from Kansas, doing some dance in, in our classrooms. And then MCPS added one visual art teacher, and Teach Academy opened. So a lot going on this year. I just wanted to make a note that when I say "we," it means like really MCPS and/or Spark. I find us having such a strong partnership that oftentimes I say "we," even when referring to MCPS. So then our next 10, we're really working on what, what does this look like for our next 10 years? And we're, we hired someone to help us with a strategic plan that's going to really look at art equity. So how do we ensure equity and continue to do so? What does arts integration look like? What are the evolving needs of the students and teachers? Our financial health and program extension, like how else can we help serve MCPS students, families, and teachers? Okay. So the next slide is a video that really shows arts integration in our school and the initiative. Maybe. Pass that one.
What? What are you hoping to do?
Go past.
Sure. I get excited about arts integration, and of course, if we're excited about something, the kids are going to be excited about it. So in the spring, we start our two-dimensional and three-dimensional math unit. Once we have gone over the two-dimensional shapes, the square, the triangle, the rectangle, we like to bring in the math bands, and I will demonstrate how you take that math band that looks like a rubber band to them and turn it into a square or a circle.
I'm going to say shake it, and you are going to take it. And then as we move into the three-dimensional shades, we will put them in small groups, and then they put their bands together. Are you ready?
What's that?
What?
Okay.
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 So one of the ways that we've really worked hard to launch new initiatives or to grow initiatives as a district is to build teacher clarity through teacher leaders. And so when we launched our teacher clarity initiative, we were really intentional to include arts integration as a spotlight strategy. When you look at the research, creativity programs are one of those programs that have the... When we look at the effect size, it's above that hinge point of .4. Depends on when you look at the research, but generally, almost two times the effect size that you would expect for one-year worth of growth. So it's a strategy that can help students grow more than one year in one year's time. So you can see some of these pictures come from opportunities where teacher leaders are working together, training one another, and sharing these strategies. I would love to tell the story of the time that we did rap when we were teaching teacher clarity. We did it again this year around success criteria. And when the teachers walk into the room, it's the end of the day and it's hard to go to a professional development after a full day of teaching. And by the middle of the session, where they're writing raps to explain their knowledge of success criteria, teachers are laughing and they're joking. And high school teachers aren't as creative as elementary teachers. I just had to say it. But they have a little bit of trouble with the creativity part and they really do look to their elementary teachers for ideas. And it's a really cool time to collaborate and you just spend... You're in this room full of laughter. And when it does that for teachers and teachers carry that joy back to their classroom, they pass that joy on to their students. And so we truly believe that arts integration is a strategy that brings joy to our classrooms, to our teachers, to our students, and when our students bring it home to their families. If you look at the next slide, we've also worked really hard to embed this across our strategic plan and initiatives for school improvement. And we brought this graduate profile to you in January for your final approval. When we met with the community members who helped us craft this graduate profile over that year's time, I think the most impactful moment for me was when the business leaders came and talked about what they're looking for in our graduates. And they didn't say, "I hope that they're proficient in math." And they didn't say, "It's really important that they got a four on the S-Back test" or "that they scored this level on their ACTs." What they said to us is that they wanted students who could think creatively, who could problem solve, who could collaborate, who could show what they know in multiple ways, who could be faced with a problem and look for multiple solutions. And so as we built this graduate profile, we built creativity into this. And you can see in those traits that we approved as a school district, that all of those are traits that you can really bring out in lessons that are focused on arts integration. You can help students become effective communicators. You can work on projects that engage citizens in our community. And look how lucky our kids are to live in Missoula, which is an arts-rich community. And you can really engage with the arts in our community. So we've really worked hard to embed these creativity programs across our district in the way that we deliver professional development, in the way that we decide what's important for our students to learn and how we grow our professional development for teachers to make it something that they're excited to attend and not just something that they have to check off of their list.
Okay, well, now it's my time. And I'm Karen Bartels and I'm lucky enough to be the arts integration instructional coach with the 21360 grant. That's been three years, so I'm in year two. And it's been... I'll just go side note real fast before I go into my presentation, but a real experience for me to get to see the amount of talent of the teachers across our district. When you teach, and I've taught in the district for about 18 years, you're just in your building. But getting the chance to get out and see what goes on in all of the schools and how incredible the teachers are, it's really been an experience for me and I'm grateful for it. I was starting and I'm going to connect to your... Talk a little bit about why and what is your why. And I have this really epic video that's funny that we're not going to be able to see, but I'll just give you a... Oh, he sings. No. It's our first time together. But if I... Next board meeting, I'll sing it. But this is... It's a video. It's a wonderful video. And he's a comedian and he's at a performance. And he invites this music educator to sing impromptu. And he asks him to sing "Amazing Grace," right? Yep. Sing "Amazing Grace." And he sings it beautifully. It was stunning. And then he says, "Now I'd like you to sing it as if you've been shot in the back, your dad just got out of jail. You know how I want you to sing it." And he went, "All right." And he sang it. And the crowd stands up. We can send you a link to this wonderful video, too. And the crowd stands up. And the comedian... It's really funny because the comedian's reaction's fantastic. He wasn't anticipating him to be as talented as he was. But what it talks about is when he first asked him to sing, he told him what to do. And the second time he asked him to sing, he told him why. And when you have your why, you walk with that purpose. And so what I'd like to do is connect beautifully. As you were talking, I was like, "Yes!" To another art form. And they'll also spend some time thinking about our why. And so the artist I'm going to talk about is... And so, real fast, when an arts integration lesson happens in a classroom, it can happen in all kinds of different ways. In fact, I was there today doing Dance with Science. You'll see a lot... There's special education teachers taking those fluency passages that kids read and they get kind of redundant, turning them into reader's theater scripts. So now they're performing the script and they're still doing that fluency work. You'll see it in all kinds of different ways. But one of the other ways that you can do it is really ground your understanding in an artist and really talk about the artist's work and what brought them to it, their art form. And so I'm going to talk about Alexander Calder, who's a very famous artist, a sculptor, and a wire artist from early 20th century. And he's famous for his continuous line. You can see the connection to our earlier project, but the continuous line wire sculptures. And his early work, he was really interested in experimenting with wire as a drawing material in space. And he's known for this kind of fluid movement with his wires. They never stop. It's one continuous piece that he uses with the wire. And he used... His early work is really meant to be kind of portraying figurative, you know, people or animals. But then his work later goes into abstract mobiles. And so he's really famous for these incredible installations of mobiles. And then he coined the term "stables" because he made them into sculptures in open spaces that don't move. They stay put. And so that was his later work. But what I love is he is famous for his saying that "I think best in wire." And so I'm going to ask you to... You have your Chanel stems. To... I want you to envision that those are wires. And I'm going to take you through a bit of an activity, a reflection activity that we might ask students to do. And as you're going through this activity, what I want you to do is think about... I'm going to pose a question to you and how you have to think about it to be able to create. How are you engaging in a different way than I would if I had just asked a question and waited for a response? Or if I had asked a question and asked you to just give me a written paragraph response? How do you respond differently and how are you engaging? So just think about that as you're creating and as you respond to this question. It's going to feel a little bit hard. It's going to feel a little bit uncomfortable. And that is the power of arts integration, is pushing you past your comfort zone a little bit. So...
I did notice that some people were like in love with these Chanel stems even before we got into this. So if anyone needs more Chanel stems, you can just wait here.
Yeah, we don't want to limit the creative process. And when they're sitting out on the table, they're comforting. Okay, so here is your question. You're going to be thinking about his wire sculptures, Calder's Wild or sculptures. And if you'll click to the next slide for me, Mica. These are the different ways that you can use your Chanel stems, which for our sake will be our medium as opposed to wire. You can twist them, braid them, join, the bending, looping. So you can be creative. But here is your question that you will create a sculpture. It does not have to be one continuous line. We'll take that stress off. You can add to them. But I want you to think about if your purpose as a school member, school board member, could be represented in a form, what would it look like? And I'm going to give you time. I'm not going to say time in 10 seconds. I'm not going to count down because now you have to stop and think. If I created a form using these Chanel stems that represented your purpose for being at the table as a school board member, what would it be? Yeah. And so if I'm making a noticing, the level of engagement is really high, right? So as a classroom teacher, I'm noticing what decisions are they making as artists? I'm trying to decide why are they making the choices that they're making? It's intriguing. I hope you're feeling like that. "Oh, I have to now apply what she just asked me. I can't wait for someone else to answer for me." You bet. If your purpose as a school board member could be represented in a form, what would it look like? I know I'm getting out of the beat. Yeah. Remember that artists are intentional. You're making artistic decisions all the way through. You're making your bends and you're using different colors that represent something. You're twisting. There should... It probably looks like there's maybe movement. And it's... If another way to think of it is your why, if you could put a form to your why you're at the table, what would it look like?
For those of you who are getting complicated, feel free to grab some more.
Detailed. Detailed. Yeah, I'm not even going to... I don't want to rush the artistic process, but trying to be considerate of your time. We will do... We will do... We will do a gallery walk here in a minute. The poster. Okay. So you've created some kind of form. We can't wait to see. But what I'd like you to do now is what we will ask students often do is create an artist statement. And that's when you're now going to put words to what you've just created to kind of help all of us understand what your art means. So you have an index card that was also passed out to you. And on your index card, I'm going to... Now that you've created a sculpture that represents your why, I want you to take a moment to look at what you've made. And I invite you to give your sculpture a title. Can be a word or a phrase, but a title to your sculpture on that index card. So artist statement will look like this. There'll be a title of your project, your name. Your medium is Chanel stems. And then I'll guide you through the statement in a minute. Yes, please. Okay. Take a minute. Make sure you have a title. And now what I'd love for you to do is to write a sentence, if you can, about how your sculpture represents your why. Just kind of fill in the blanks for a gallery walk, for your colleagues to walk through, your peers to walk through and see it. What would you say? What is your why? And how is it represented in your sculpture? I've been asked to save that for later. There's still hope. All right. The reason I love this activity is we were at the Kennedy Center and we were in a session at the Kennedy Center this February and they did this activity. And I panicked because I would say visual art is not an art form that I'm very comfortable with. I love to write and I love anything that's theater. But when I was asked to do this, I had this moment of discomfort. And then laughed. We laughed. And then mine was mentioned the most by the gallery walk. So I felt this high level of success. So what I'd love to do now is if you'll set your sculpture and your index card so that they're visible. And we're now just going to take a walk. So you'll just do a loop around and let's take and do a gallery walk of what our peers have created and what their why is. First off, thank you for participating in that. I know that might not be something that you do on the daily. So thank you for your active participation, and I hope you had a moment where you could, one, have a laugh, or a chance to be creative, always feels good. Maybe you did something you'd never done before. And then also to be thinking about how we ask students to demonstrate their understanding. And are we mixing it up? Are we thinking about them as individuals? Are we giving them access to different ways to show what they know and to grow and learn? And so I hope you were able to experience that tonight with a couple of different activities that are creative learning strategies that really bring engagement to the classroom. Like Barbara said, joy not only for the kids, but even as an adult, when you get to see what kids come up with and create, you cannot help but smile through your day. So it does bring absolute joy to teaching. I'm going to let Sienna start sharing our great news.
Okay, and then you'll jump in.
I will.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we started this last year. It's a Spark Arts Integration Awards Night, and we have this at Missoula Art Museum to really honor the teachers who are taking arts integration and using it with fidelity in their classrooms and that we're seeing become teacher leaders. They're the ones in the building that are the fire starters, the ones that are really moving things forward and encouraging their colleagues to continue this work. And it's been really fun to see these like little sparks, if you will, at the schools, and then it just kind of grows from these really enthusiastic educators. So we like to recognize them and honor them, value them. And so we have an event at Missoula Art Museum. This year, it's May 14th from 5:00 to 7:00. And it's in the gallery space. There's food and music, and then we provide them an award to recognize their work. We invite you to come. And then, something we are so excited about, honestly, this is going to be the highlight of my career. It is something that has excited me throughout this whole year. And like, I just can't begin to explain the passion and thrill that I have for this Arts Integration Conference. It is going to be next level. Like, it's amazing. So we, as you saw in the timeline, were able to bring some people down to site visits, right? But a lot of times, it's only five to 10 people who get to go. And so for our 10-year anniversary, we were really thinking, Barbara's on the board, Trevor's on the board, what do we want to do in terms of celebrate? Like, how do we want to celebrate? Do we want to sprinkle in these community outreach activities? And we really thought as a group, like, no, we want to go back to our mission, which is equity and access. And we want to elevate that. And so instead of bringing five to 10 educators somewhere, we're bringing the conference to us. So that's allowing us to reach 350 educators. We received funding to have this conference a $425 stipend or fee for this conference. It's waived. So all educators get to come to this conference. Karen can speak to the like high level of leaders that will be there. But we cannot wait, and we strongly encourage and welcome you to this. It's an opportunity also to thank Phyllis Washington, Mrs. Washington, for her work and dedication to this initiative. And she is planning on being there, and we will honor her then as well, so.
I'm going to speak on the change agents that we love to say we've curated, the best in the country and the nation. So we have 10 of the best Kennedy Center artists from across the country coming here, as opposed to getting to send only 10 teachers. We're going to bring 10 of the best. And so we have, I'm going to say names, and you're going to look at me, but I'm, they are absolutely, Baba Bomanee is the hip-hop writer that changed my path in 2018 and made me go, "Oh, this is accessible to me. I may not see myself as a visual artist, but I guess my writing does make me an artist." And so these are change agents. We have Glennis Redman, who is South Carolina's poet laureate. She came this last summer, and she spoke to our principals, and it was incredibly powerful for them. It was only one hour, and it was really powerful. Glennis Redman's coming. Baba Bomanee.
She doesn't travel anymore, but she comes to Missoula because she knows how invested our community is.
And, I mean, Amani Gonzalez is coming. She does the soundscapes and sound backgrounds for National Geographic, and she'll come and work with teachers that are interested in putting sounds to the stories that you're reading or writing jazz and blues. I mean, just incredible change agents. The author of the Arts Integration definition from the Kennedy Center, Sean Lane will be leading sessions. We will also have maker spaces throughout. We're having at the University of Montana's education building. And there'll be maker spaces throughout. We'll be having a four-to-six. We invite you to that on June 19th from four to six. It's kind of a networking time. And there'll be an iron pour from Jesse Blumenthal, who is an artist resident with Spark and also teaches at the university. It's going to be unbelievable. And we are so excited to be able to offer it to our teachers for free. We also have 30 of the teachers for Durrell Academy coming up for our conference. So we are excited about it being at a national level.
Yeah, so that is our work session for tonight. I hope, one, you felt a connection to what this amazing team is doing. I don't think I could emphasize enough, when we have visited other areas of the country, when we've talked to other districts, the scale in which this team and our amazing teachers and educators are doing across the district is not replicated anywhere. Typically, it's pockets of districts that are spreading and building integration into their classrooms. We are in a process of scaling this EL 12. And so it's really remarkable, and it's a testament to the work that this team is doing. But as Karen said earlier, truly the amazing teachers that we have in our buildings, their willingness to think outside the box, to continue to be innovative in their classrooms. I don't think I can justify, when you watch a teacher do a lot of these strategies, the joy that they have and the feeling that it reverberates around the classroom. And it's one that I'm excited to see grow year after year. So again, testament to this team, to our teachers, and thanks for going through this journey tonight with us.
So do board members have comments, questions, etc.?
Can I say something?
Tina?
I just want to say it is incredible, the passion you guys have, and it does speak, just listening to you guys talk. And now you just set the bar high for all the rest of the work sessions that we have now. We'll expect interactive.
Although the video, the video might be... Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say this definitely the best work session we've had, and I think integrating arts into our board meetings is great. I am also curious if theater schools are able to attend this conference for free?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Gosh, you know, the whole time I'm sitting here, being so engaged, it really reminds me of Anita Archer. She used to be this big name in education, and her whole thing is active engagement and learning. And the quote that just kept staying in my mind was, "Learning is not a spectator sport. And the more engaged you can keep kids whole bodies, the more you're keeping their brain engaged." And I just think what you guys are doing is amazing.
Other comments from the board? Questions? Public? Do we have any comments from the public? Go ahead. Oh, great job. That's it? That's all? Well, seeing none, what time is it? Eight o'clock? We're now adjourned.